Good afternoon, everyone. Please settle down. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Housing and Buildings. If you would like to testify, you must fill out a testimony slip with one of the Sergeant at Arms. You may submit testimony at council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Please silence all electronic devices. No one may approach the dais at any time during this hearing. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeants. Calling this hearing to order. Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Birina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I want to thank you all for joining today's hearing to discuss four pieces of legislation related to ancillary dwelling units, or ADUs, and basement apartment legalization. I would like, I would like to thank my councilmembers, colleagues who are present, Councilmember Ressler, and others who will be joining. Our housing crisis is well documented. More than half of New Yorkers are rent burdened. Two hundred thousand black residents have left the city over the past decade. Low and middle income New Yorkers of all ages and races are priced out of their communities. Nearly one hundred thousand of our neighbors are sleeping in shelters every night. The need for more housing and low-cost housing above all is critical. Yet despite that need, just a handful of neighborhoods have carried the burden of building housing in our city. Over the last decade, ten council districts have built fifty thousand units of affordable housing, more than the other forty-one districts combined. Accessory dwelling units are a small but meaningful step toward our fair housing goals, where every community can do its part. Several weeks ago, this council heard over fifteen hours of testimony, received and received written comments from hundreds of New Yorkers regarding the administration's City of Yes for Housing zoning tax amendment. While we are presently in the heat of negotiations, as you may have seen through some articles that had some interesting information, while we are presently in the heat of negotiations that incorporate important elements of feedback that we have heard, the legislation before us today represents a regulatory companion to the zoning tax amendment. Specifically, the administration's City of Yes for Housing Opportunity zoning tax amendment, among other provisions, would remove barriers for homeowners who want to add an accessory dwelling unit on their property. The zoning reforms must be accompanied by building code amendments. In addition, to the context of the housing crisis we face, I must also take a moment to provide us with a sobering reminder. It has been three years since the historic rainfall during Hurricane Ida flooded tens of thousands, sorry, flooded tens of thousands of homes, resulting in the deaths of eleven New Yorkers living in illegal basement apartments in Queens. Eight months later, three more lives were cut short after a fire swept through basement apartments in Richmond Hill. The imperative to bring basement apartments and accessory dwelling units into compliance, into regulation, is also one about saving lives. Each year, dozens of families continue to be rescued from these kinds of units. For years, advocates like the BASE Coalition, which includes the Pratt Center for Community Development, Queens Legal Services, CHIA, CDC, Cypress Hills, and the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, have fought for safe basement apartment legalization. Because bringing existing dwelling units up to code by assuring they have proper exits, safe levels of light and ventilation, and a sensible regulatory framework is essential for both the safety of existing residents of these unit types and meeting the housing and affordability, affordability needs of our city. I look forward to hearing from the administration on how this legislation would help New York, keep New Yorkers safe and provide more desperately needed low-cost housing during this unprecedented time of need. To this end, we are considering two pieces of legislation that come to the committee at the request of the mayor. T twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven sixty-four, which will soon have an intro number, would, is a local law that would establish a pilot program to convert existing basement or cellar apartments to habitable dwelling units. And T twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven sixty-five is a local law that would amend the Administrative Code of the City of New York in relation to the construction of ancillary dwelling units. In addition to the basements and ADU legislation, we will also be hearing two other pieces of legislation. Introduction number eight fifty by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca is in relation to requiring the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to report on the disposition of city property for affordable housing development with the goal of improving transparency on where city finance projects are located and how long financing is taking for these developments. Finally, resolution number five twenty-four by Councilmember Kevin Riley calls upon New York State, the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Assembly Bill eighty-five ninety-one, Senate seventeen oh nine, in relation to legal representation in certain mortgage foreclosure actions. The resolution calls attention to the need for a statewide right to counsel for homeowners facing foreclosure proceedings. I'd like to thank my Chief of Staff Sam Cardenas, my Director of Land Use Policy and Budget Ben Ratner, our Policy Associate Gerard Fernandez, Legislative Fellow Carla Dominguez, and the Housing and Buildings Committee staff Austin Maloney, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, Dirk Spencer, Dan Krup, and Reese Hidota. A special thank you for those of you who were not aware. Taylor Zaloni, who is our now former committee counsel to the committee. Her last day was on Friday. She did an excellent, excellent job. And her unending dedication to the work of our committee, coupled with her expansive knowledge of housing, the housing sphere, made her an invaluable member of the committee team who will be sorely missed. We wish Taylor all the best as she pursues a new and exciting opportunity in her legal career. Thank you. And with that, I will now call on the committee counsel to administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to answer all councilmember questions honestly?
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin.
Good afternoon. Before I dive in, I want to move it closer. How's that? Better? Okay. I'm usually pretty loud, but, okay. Before I dive in, I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss accessory dwelling units, including basement apartments, which touch on critical issues facing New York City and present opportunities to make New York City more livable, safe, and affordable. Today, I will also be testifying on Intro eight fifty, a bill requiring the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to submit quarterly reports to the council for affordable housing projects and public sites that have gone through ULP but have not yet closed. Thank you, Chair Sanchez and councilmembers, for inviting us to testify today and for sponsoring these critical bills. My name is Kim Darga. As the Deputy Commissioner for the Department, for Development at the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, it is my responsibility to think critically about how we can create, preserve, and protect affordable homes. I am joined by one of my team members, Stephen Erman, who oversees our Homeownership Opportunities and Preservation Division, Gus Saracus, Deputy Commissioner for Development and Technical Affairs at the Department of Buildings, and John Manchin, Housing Director at the Department of City Planning. As the council knows, New York City is suffering from a severe housing crisis that is generations in the making. The effects are felt in every single neighborhood by New Yorkers from every single walk of life. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, a citywide text amendment currently being considered by the council, aims to tackle this crisis by building a little bit more housing in every neighborhood across the city. The plan has many components, from the universal affordability preference, which will be the largest affordable housing program in the history of US zoning, to changes that promote office-to-residential conversion. As Deputy Commissioner for Development, but really as a New Yorker, I love the differences between every borough and every neighborhood in our city. Importantly, City of Yes recognizes those differences and knows that not every community in the city can be treated the same. We do not want a monolithic city. City of Yes proposes tailored reforms that match the look and feel of New York's diverse neighborhoods. Today, we're here to discuss an aspect of City of Yes that is particularly important in lower-density communities, accessory dwelling units, including basement and cellar apartments. Across the city, homeowners are confronting significant challenges. Older New Yorkers, unfixed incomes, struggle to stay in communities they built. Young families can't afford to buy a first home or keep up with the mortgage. And New Yorkers of all ages lack space for young, young adult children, grandparents, and caregivers. Accessory dwelling units can add new housing opportunities to low-density neighborhoods without significantly changing the look or feel of the neighborhood. Through the city's Fair Housing Plan, Where We Live NYC, HPD identified ADUs as a way to expand housing opportunities in low-density neighborhoods while maintaining their character. The City of Yes's ADU proposal puts this Where We Live strategy into action and is one step to making a fair city for all. City of Yes will give New York City homeowners the opportunity to add an accessory dwelling unit, a small apartment of more, no more than eight hundred square feet, on an underused portion of their property. ADUs make it easier for homeowners to downsize, age in place, bring in extra income, or provide living space for a loved one. The ability to add an ADU will especially benefit older New Yorkers, which is why AARP New York has spoken out so forcefully in favor of this aspect of the plan. But the benefits extend well beyond seniors. Middle-class homeowners across the country are building and benefiting from ADUs. Today, roughly one in every five new homes in California is an ADU. Indeed, experience from major cities across the country, from Los Angeles to Chicago to Boston, shows that ADUs are proven housing solution. They can provide a home for a family while also stabilizing homeowners who benefit from being able to have family living nearby or rental income to help provide financial stability. New York City's zoning laws are behind these other cities. Our homeowners deserve the same opportunity and the same flexibility to use their property to meet their family's needs. Permitting ADUs also benefits the tens of thousands of New Yorkers who are currently living in illegal basement or cellar apartments. By bringing this very common housing type out of the shadows, tenants living in basements and cellars will be empowered to exercise their rights. Additionally, it is expected that the city will be able to address violations in otherwise safe basement or cellar units, rather than simply issuing a vacate order, the only tool available to them today, and one that results in tenants losing their homes. While City of Yes will enable accessory dwelling units under zoning, additional local law changes are needed to ensure that ADUs are safe, well-regulated, and accessible to ordinary homeowners. Today, you are considering two critical local law reforms to make that a reality. The first, pre-considered T twenty twenty-four twenty-seven sixty-four, would make changes to local rules, including the building code, to recognize the new category of accessory dwelling unit and to set out rules that got, to govern them. The second, T twenty twenty-four twenty-seven sixty-five, stands up a program to legalize basin and cellar apartments and certain community districts, taking advantage of new state-enabling legislation that was won in Albany last session thanks to tireless efforts of advocates, including the BASE Campaign, members of this body, and state legislative partners like Senator Kavanaugh and Assembly Member Epstein. The details of the two proposals before you are product of a sustained inter-agency effort. In twenty twenty-three, the city retained consultants BGAH Advisors and BAE Urban Economics to study the successful implementation of ADU programs in cities across North America, including San Jose, Los Angeles, Vancouver, and Boston. Their study found that while zoning changes are essential to enabling legal ADUs, zoning changes alone are not enough. Other local actions are needed. As a result, last summer, the city convened an inter-agency working group to think through additional local law reforms. This group included experts in the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, the Department of Buildings, the Fire Department, New York City Emergency Management, the Department of City Planning, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, the Mayor's Office of Housing Recovery Operations. Together, these agencies develop proposals to regulate this new housing type, ensure the safety of homeowners, tenants, and first responders, and make sure that ordinary homeowners can take advantage of this opportunity. As I mentioned, pre-considered T twenty twenty-four twenty-seven sixty-four would make changes to local rules, including the building code, to recognize the new category of accessory dwelling unit and set out rules to govern them. The most critical changes it makes respect health and safety, including require that all basement and cellar ADUs, as well as detached and attached ADUs, include automatic sprinkler systems. Fire department access requirements, including rules ensuring adequate egress and emergency escape and rescue openings. A new identification protocol so that first responders can readily identify the location of an accessory dwelling unit when they are called to, onto a scene. Limits on basement and cellar apartments in areas prone to coastal flooding and, for the first time, in areas particularly prone to inland flooding. In basement and cellar apartments, new requirements for the installation of water sensors and flood alarms, as well as inward opening doors. Rules ensuring adequate light and ventilation, and minimum ceiling and window requirements, and so on. Together, these rules will help ensure that accessory dwelling units, whether they be basement or cellar apartments, additions onto existing homes, or backyard cottages, will be safe and habitable. Pre-considered T twenty twenty-four twenty-seven sixty-five would stand up a time-limited program to legalize basement and cellar apartments in certain community districts. Across the city, tens of thousands of New Yorkers live in basement and cellar apartments. The current law makes it illegal or infeasible to bring most of these units up to code. The current approach, a broad prohibition on lawful basement and cellar apartments, is simply not working. Basement and cellars continue to be occupied, often under dangerous conditions. Tenants lack basic protections because their tendency is not lawful. And when something goes wrong, first responders are called into hazardous conditions, like flooded apartments without adequate means of escape or egress, or smoked-filled basements without fire suppression measures like sprinklers. Not all of these basements or cellars can be safely legalized. And enforcement against unsafe conditions is critical to protect tenants, homeowners, and first responders. But many units can be made safe. Unfortunately, a complex mix of state regulations, local zoning barriers, and local building codes have made it, long made it difficult to bring those units that can be safely occupied up to code. Using new authority under the state multiple dwelling law, pre-considered, pre-considered T twenty twenty-four twenty-seven sixty-five is a breakthrough, providing a pathway to legalization for many units. The legislation directs HPD to provide technical assistance to owners of eligible basement and cellars and conduct public education and outreach to homeowners who are likely to have these units. HPD will also, subject to available resources, provide financial assistance to homeowners. And critically, the legislation creates an opportunity for currently unregulated units to come out of the shadows, make vital safety upgrades, and if they come up to code, become permanently lawful units. These rules were designed with safety in mind. Not every basement or cellar will be eligible. Units in areas of acute flood risk cannot participate. Eligible basements cannot pose any imminent risk to life or safety of its inhabitants, must pass an inspection, must have a means of egress directly to the outdoors, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and adequate ceiling heights. Once a property enters the program, property owners must continue to follow program rules, make upgrades over time, and within ten years of enrollment, come into full compliance. But if homeowners meet these standards, a unit can receive a permanent certificate of occupancy. Importantly, this legislation also sets out protections for the tenants of currently inhabited apartments. This includes state law rules that tenants in occupancy as of the time of enactment and who are subsequently evicted or otherwise removed from an apartment as a result of an alteration needed to bring the unit up to code have a legally enforceable right, a first refusal to return to these units. Together, these pieces of legislation will bring sorely needed relief to New York homeowners and tenants, making it easier for New Yorkers to age in place, to afford a starter home, to live close to loved ones, and to experience the peace of mind that comes from housing stability. Turning to Intro eight fifty, we agree that transparency into HPD's programs and processes is important and appreciate Councilmember Salamanca's advocacy to move this legislation forward. We're looking forward to meeting with the council to explore ways that we can refine the bill to ensure the agency can implement the requirements of the bill without compromising on its intent. Most critically, HPD is undertaking a significant technological and administrative overhaul of our internal project management system that will better enable the agency to oversee our workflow for affordable housing projects. We project that this project management system will be built out and implemented in twenty twenty-eight. This new system will enable HPD to publicly report out on the information that this legislation seeks to require of the agency. We're grateful for the productive work we have been able to accomplish on these three bills with the city council, especially as we work together to advance the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity Tax Amendment. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We look forward to partnering with you to advance these critical measures.
Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. I want to acknowledge that we have been joined by public advocate Jemani Williams and by Councilmember Oswald Felice. Before, before I begin with questions, we're going to have remarks from our public advocate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jemani Williams, Public Advocate for the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Sanchez and the members of the Committee on Housing and Buildings for holding this very important hearing. There are a number of bills being heard today, but I'd like to talk about two in particular requested by the mayor. Intro number twenty-seven sixty-four would require the Department of Environmental Protection to formulate rules around flood-risk areas and further set eligibility and design requirements for new ancillary dwelling units, also known as ADUs, in these flood-risk areas. Similarly, Intro number twenty-seven sixty-five tackles the issue of converting existing basement apartments by establishing a legalization pilot program under the Department of Buildings. ADUs are a critical component of our housing stock within estimated four hundred thousand people living in basement and cellar dwellings across the five boroughs. Despite this, many units still remain illegal, out of code, and at risk of flooding, putting countless New Yorkers, countless New Yorkers at risk. We saw the devastating impact that Hurricane Ida had on families living in these basement apartments when the storm took the lives of thirteen New Yorkers. The efforts of these bills, in my opinion, are long overdue, but it is never too late to make these critical policy changes. It is also important to note, however, the city cannot alone, alone cannot make these changes. We know this much from the Basement Legalization Pilot Program. We saw only five out of eight thousand potential units able to participate. Despite high interest, many landlords were unable to join the program due to restrictive zoning and a lack of financial support from the city and state to facilitate the conversions. Look forward to seeing the passage of these bills and work, working with our state partners to legalize, regulate, and protect these units and the countless tenants who call them home. But if we are truly to solve our city's core housing crisis, efforts also must go hand in hand with preserving units that we have and construction of new and deeply affordable housing. I also know that there are concerns about these units in different neighborhoods. My hope is that we can work with those units, neighborhoods, to figure out how best to do this, not that we can't do this. If we do not get the housing we need and preserve the housing we already have, we would have failed future generations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, public advocate. Okay. So now, turning, turning to the questions. I'm going to start with general questions and then move to more of the particulars. You mentioned, you referenced some, you referenced an example in California, but national, nationally, many jurisdictions in Atlanta, Chicago, and California have legalized accessory dwelling units and basement apartments. Since twenty twenty-two, can you talk about their experience adopting these policies? And have these experiences influenced the drafting of the pre-considered legislation being heard today?
Yes, thank you. So we did actually hire some consultants to help us look at programs across the country and what actually resulted in success and what continued to impair use of flexibility, particularly within zoning. And what we found is that successful programs not only addressed the zoning barriers that exist to creating an ADU. So for example, California adopted a zoning code around ADUs in the nineteen eighties, but also address code requirements and make the code requirements clear and consistent, and also provide technical and financial assistance for homeowners. So those lessons learned from other places were critical to us in terms of how we have thought about shaping this legislation that we are looking at today, as well as how we've thought about pairing both the zoning changes with the code changes.
Thank you. Can you, can you speak to the ways in which this legislation would make it easier for homeowners to operate ADUs? And what are the benefits to homeowners for renters in search of low-cost housing?
Can you repeat your question? Sorry.
Yeah, just another general question on the potential benefits to homeowners. How will this legislation make it easier for homeowners to create ADUs? And what are the benefits for these homeowners and for renters that are in search of low-cost housing?
Great. So right now, I'm going to speak a little bit, take a step back. So I've been at HPD for some time now. And I was at the city when we were looking at how to create the basement apartment conversion program that the public advocate just referenced. And at that time, we did work with city council very closely to look at code changes to address the needs around legalizing a basement or cellar apartment. As the public advocate said, we reached out to thousands of property owners in Community Board Five of Brooklyn where it was authorized. And we actually heard from many homeowners that they were interested. At the end of the day, because of zoning limitations, as well as financial limitations and complexity, very few homeowners actually proceeded with that program. So there are some really substantial benefits to what the city is proposing now. First, we have, with the zoning changes, not just this legislation, but with the zoning changes, clear zoning regulations when it comes to ADUs. With this legislation, we have clear code requirements when it comes to both ADUs and basements. That clarity and the, making it easier for owners to be able to navigate the very complex and myriad environment that exists today, we think will make a really fundamental difference. But we're not stopping there. We're also creating a resource library for homeowners to make it easier for them to navigate the codes that we hope will be adopted. That will include step-by-step process for homeowners on how to navigate this, as well as we are hoping to have pre-approved plans available so that those, if they use those plans, they can move pretty quickly through the process. And certainly, that will cut down costs. So we're working on many fronts to make it easier, in addition to that technical assistance. We are, also, we have a plus-one ADU program at HPD right now. It was, it is more limited in scale today because of some of the zoning and code restrictions that exist. But it's our intent to make sure that that program remains an offering going forward. Couple other things I would just note. In the, so, we administer a lot of programs at HPD, including homeowner repair programs. We launched our latest homeowner program, program about five years ago. And in the first four and a half years, we got about five thousand expressions of interest in our homeowner repair program. We launched our plus-one ADU program last November, this time last year. And the application window, or the letter of interest window, was open for just under three months. We got two thousand eight hundred homeowners that reached out to us in that very short period of time. And homeowners overwhelmingly said that they are interested in adding an ADU to their home because it improves their financial security and their ability to house their family and address their family's needs. And so allowing ADUs, whether it's a basement or it's a detached, small unit, And so allowing ADUs, whether it's a basement or it's a detached, small unit, attached, helps homeowners address their own family's needs. That is what we are looking for here, is to provide an option for homeowners to address their needs and make it more easier for them to do so.
Can you just tell us quickly a little bit more about the plus-one accessory dwelling unit program? I know it allowed up to 15 eligible homeowners to build or convert ADUs on their properties. Can you just remind us, I know we talked about it about a year and a half ago at a very similar hearing, but how many New Yorkers applied to this program? Did HPD select the contractors or did the property owners make the selections? And then how many homeowners have participated to date? Is the city planning, well, you just mentioned some of the changes. And sorry, before you answer, I just want to acknowledge that we were joined by council member Aviles.
So I'll start, and then I'm going to pass it on to my colleague, Stephen Erman, who oversees the division that runs the program. So the plus-one ADU program is a loan program that HPD administers. It is jointly financed between HPD and the state, so we basically worked with a partner organization to secure state funding. We provide about $220,000 per unit, or up to, and the state provides up to $175,000 per unit in order to help low and moderate income homeowners address the cost associated with creating a legal unit. It is, like I said just a second ago, we saw really, really, really significant demand from homeowners in a very limited time. That level of demand is unprecedented. We don't see that in any of our other loan programs. And so it is clear to us, not only from that program, but from what we saw in the basement program, some of the research other organizations have done, that this is, creating ADUs is something that New Yorkers are desperately interested in doing. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen to talk a little bit about how we structure the financial assistance to make it affordable to homeowners, and also maybe to talk a little bit about the technical assistance we're providing.
Thank you, Kim. So as mentioned, the city and the state both provide financial resources to homeowners to construct the ADUs. But as we've mentioned in the testimony and already in the Q and A, it's not just about financial resources, there's also technical assistance that's needed to navigate the process, the code requirements. So we do work with nonprofit partners who help the homeowners who participate in overseeing the construction of the ADU, the pre-development process. They also provide training, a small landlord. There's a lot of assistance that is provided as part of the program. We already mentioned that we had about 2,800 households express interest. We're working with a subset of those households on applications right now, and we're, you know, working on some active applications and hoping to get to the first loan closings, you know, soon. And we have funding for about 35 households as part of the current program.
Sorry. One thing I would just add to what Stephen said is that, you know, what we found is, even today, we were very clear in advertising the program that it was available to existing single-family homeowners because we knew that the zoning today creates really substantial restrictions, and we also know that the multiple dwelling law creates very substantial restrictions for homeowners converting from a two to a three family. So we did actually create some limitations. Even with that, we got all kinds of homeowners that reached out, and many of those homeowners still faced very substantial restrictions within the current regulations. Floor area, lot area, 30% of those that expressed interest were not able to move forward because of that, because of minimum yard requirements, 15%, distance between structures, 13%. And then on a more limited basis, there were some restrictions associated with parking and coastal flood risk. So it's very clear to us that there is really substantial demand, but if we don't actually address the really substantial regulatory barriers that exist today, we're going to continue to prevent owners from having the option.
Thank you. And is there any information you can share about the geographic spread of the interests from these 2,800 homeowners?
Yeah, so we actually had interest from all five boroughs, even Manhattan, which I found very interesting. It was the least in Manhattan.
They have yards there?
It was the least in Manhattan, it would make sense, given just the density and housing typology. The most demand was in Queens, Staten Island, and Bronx, and Staten Island and Bronx were pretty equivalent with Queens being first, Brooklyn being second.
Now, I'm just remarking, no shade to my colleagues, but remarking that some of the strongest concerns and oppositions that we're hearing to just the legalization of accessory dwelling units is coming from parts of Queens and Staten Island. So I think that's very interesting. It'd be helpful to have those numbers and any breakdown that you can provide on, maybe even by council members, council districts, to share that with folks so they can see what the interest levels are in their own communities. Great. So my next question is on affordability protections, right? We're talking about ADUs, and you and I both framed similarly that accessory dwelling units can be helpful as meeting a part of the housing crisis that we have. Jomani, the public advocate, just mentioned that many advocates have estimated, an estimated 400,000 New Yorkers that live in basement apartments now, they live there today. So for tenants who may need to temporarily vacate a basement unit that is being converted or an ADU, whatever their circumstance, what are the rent protections that are on the table for residents, either in the pilot programs that you have described or moving forward? What is the city considering in terms of protecting residents from displacement and from very big increases in their rents?
That's actually, it's an interesting question. This is one area where, you know, working in public policy, trying to figure out the right path, I think it's more difficult, right? I run programs that finance affordable housing, that's what I do as a living, and there are times when we have to make choices, and I think this is one of those times. We just talked about a few minutes ago that right now, the barriers to owners in doing this work are extremely significant. If we don't make this possible for owners, it will not happen, and we will not create safer spaces for tenants to live. So our first priority here is to make sure that owners have the option, that we are balancing feasibility and safety within the codes, and that we can create a path for people to bring ADUs out of the shadows. So that's our first priority. For the basement temporary status program that was authorized by state law and that we had authorized in New York City through the legislation that we are looking at today, the basement or cellar apartments that have a resident there and at the point in time the law was enacted, and where that tenant is evicted or removed because of the renovations, that tenant has the ability to return to the unit, their choice to return. So the point here is not to remove folks, right? It's to give them a choice to stay, but to stay in a safer home. As part of the plus-one ADU program, we actually are experimenting with this very question. We actually have two options for homeowners. So owners can choose to have basically cheaper financing if they agree to a restriction on the new ADU unit, or are they going to choose to have still pretty cheap, but less cheap financing and not have a restriction on the unit? And the reason we've done that is because we are working with so many different types of owners, and what we've learned from the basement pilot and the plus-one ADU pilot, most of the homeowners that are coming to us are themselves low-income, and that adding an ADU is a way for them to improve their family's financial security. So there is actually some tension between creating a restricted, affordable unit and improving the financial viability of the homeowner. And so I'm going to go back to, we need to make sure that this is a, the regulatory structure set up here allows homeowners to make that choice, and then it's our goal to provide financial assistance to homeowners that allows them to make a choice that makes the most sense for their family.
Thank you. Moving to the working group that you described, that the inter-agency working group that helped to draft these pieces of legislation, can you tell us when the working group was established? Who was a part of the working group? Specifically, did the city consult with external folks, external staff to the city, members of the industry, plumbers, different trades?
So this is, I'm going to go back a little bit further. This is definitely not the first working group we've had around basements and sellers. In fact, the first one that I was part of emerged after the East New York rezoning, when the community there said, "We want an option to be able to legalize basement and cellar apartments in our neighborhood." And so we worked with many agencies, with many external stakeholders, to assess what was necessary in order to do that. And we, as part of that, city council passed legislation creating a code essentially for basement and cellar conversions. That code is very similar to the one that we are looking at today with some modifications. We're happy to talk about that more later. But that was really kind of the basis for looking, a starting point for looking at what made sense here from a building code perspective. So, and then subsequently, unfortunately, Ida occurred, and we had a lot of deaths in subgrade units, and so we have looked more closely at flood risk particularly. You know, a fire risk was early on part of our conversations, flood risk. I think we put, we realized we can't just think about coastal flood risk, that we really do need to think about inland flood risk as well. And then most recently, we met across all the agencies that I mentioned earlier to look at how to create a clear, feasible, and safe code, both for ADUs and basements. And so the goal here is having clarity to create a cost-effective way to actually do this work, but not sacrifice safety in the process. And so that is, that inter-agency working group, including the Department of Buildings, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Office of Emergency Management, and many others, were part ultimately of how we got to where we got today.
Got it. Thank you. And so were there external stakeholders to city agencies?
In this latest inter-agency group, there were not. There were earlier external stakeholder discussions, but certainly I will defer to my department, from the Department of Buildings, about whether or not any of the specific modifications at any point came from external engagement.
Hi. I don't believe any of these provisions were run by any of our building code committees or from external stakeholders in particular, but just overall feedback that we've had, as Kim described, on what goes into putting together an ADU in a basement or cellar or detached unit.
Thank you. I've received some feedback already from folks who are concerned about the plastic piping provision in the ADU legislation, specifically U 103.5.5. I've heard concerns around health and safety. Is that on the department's radar, and do you have a response at this time for why plastic piping could pose health and safety concerns within ADUs?
So I'll maybe cover the very basic, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague from the Department of Buildings. So as I mentioned before, our goal is both to create a clear code that is cost-effective as possible, given the overwhelming cost of creating these units, without sacrificing safety. We did look at, we are, the code does include allowance for plastic water pipes, and this is based on the International Code Council. And so I will defer to my colleague from the Department of Buildings to talk more about how we believe that that is a safe option.
Yes, as Kim mentioned, the requirement here, we are actually referring back to the New York State codes themselves for whatever materials are approved for use in the rest of the state. And the state code, similar to the city code, is based on the International Code Council family of codes. Those codes are put through a pretty rigorous process. It is the national model code for construction in the country. In some instances, it's adopted internationally as well. It relies on many nationally recognized standards, including for the material standards, all the materials that are approved for use in these standards are then listed for their usage, which means a third-party testing entity takes the products that are there, does testing, does onsite, I believe, surveillance visits to the manufacturing plants on some kind of a recurring basis to make sure that they're still in compliance with whatever listings that are issued, and then gives them the according national listing. The goal here was to try and align with national standards. Given that these are ADUs, there was also mention that there could potentially be, for some of the detached ADUs, potentially the use of the New York State Modular Program, which is already in effect here. We have New York State built modular programs for one and two-family homes. I believe they might be height limited, but the idea is that they are subject to the New York State Code, except for all of the work that is performed here locally at the job site. So foundations, site connections, but what's inside the box complies with this state code already. The idea was that we would not want to preclude or otherwise inhibit whatever the options are, especially when it comes to affordability perspective, what is safe to be utilized.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. And so is this allowance for plastic piping different than what is allowed inside of a one- or two-family home today in New York City?
I would have to check, but I believe this is different than what's allowed in the New York City Plumbing Code, but it would match what's allowed for a modular one-or-two-family home built under the New York State Plumbing Code and placed on a foundation here in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So moving to the number of ADUs allowed, this is a potential inconsistency that we found in the legislation, so wanted to ask about it. As amended by the City Planning Commission, the City of Yes for Housing Opportunities zoning text amendment allows one ADU per one-or-two-family dwelling with some geographic exclusion, but the legislation allows one per tax lot. Does the administration believe the legislation will align with this definition of what's in the zoning text at the end of this process?
So I think, so within zoning, it is one ADU per building, and I will let my colleague from DCP correct me if I have gotten that wrong. And within the code, the ADU code that we are talking about today, the allowance is for one ADU per tax lot. The overwhelming number of buildings are on individual tax lots, so those generally align and will allow homeowners to add an ADU to their property.
Why is there a difference in the wording between the amendment, the tax amendment and the code? Why, why is there a difference, um, in the, in the wording between the amendment, the tax amendment and the code?
I'm not, I can't speak to why the zoning text is written how it is. I don't know.
Sure, thank you for the question. So it's not particularly common anymore, but we do have zoning lots in the city, uh, individual zoning lots that will have multiple one or two-family homes on them. In that situation, each, uh, one or two-family home will tend to be on its own tax lot. The reason why we drafted the text the way that we did is, in that situation, say you have a hundred single-family homes on a big zoning lot. If we said one ADU per zoning lot, then the first person builds an ADU and everybody else is out of luck. So we wanted to ensure that every one or two-family homeowner would have the opportunity to add an ADU, even in that situation where you have multiple one or two-family homes on a big old zoning lot in Staten Island.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, inland flooding, so notably, this legislation creates geographic exclusions for basement and cellar ADUs in inland flooding areas, as, as you've just mentioned, Deputy Commissioner. How does the administration believe that inland flood risk should be assessed for the purposes of basement ADU safety? How should this risk mapping be updated over time to reflect the changing climate?
Sure. So as I mentioned a few minutes ago, um, when we originally, um, created a, a basement seller, um, conversion code back in 2018, 2019, we were primarily concerned with coastal flood risk. It was after Sandy, we understand, we understood the impact that storm surge could have in terms of safety. Um, we hadn't really thought as much, I think, i- in terms of basement, especially subgrade unit, uh, subgrade units, the potential risk of inland flooding. And, um, since Ida, we have done substantial work in better understanding, trying to better understand that risk. Um, we have looked at, um, basement flood mitigation. Um, we have a study that is ongoing that we expect to have the results of by, uh, 2027. We've looked at, um, the feasibility of backwater valves in terms of mitigation for inland flooding. Um, and our, and, uh, DEP has actively looked at, um, geography where there is higher, um, um, likeliness of severe inland flood risk. And so the, um, the legislation that you have before you today, particularly with regard to, um, uh, basement and sellers, um, does not pro, uh, does not allow basement or cellar legalization in coastal flood areas or in areas where there is acute or high risk of inland flooding. And that is specifically the 10-year rainfall flood risk area, which is approximately two inches per hour. Um, and, um, we do expect that there will be some allowance. We're, DOB is working, we're going to be working with DOB and the other agencies over the next couple of months, um, if this legislation is passed, to create rules around areas that have less acute inland flood risk, but where additional flood mitigation actually may be warranted. And, um, there are a range of strategies to mitigate risk, um, including raising, um, you know, utilities, making sure that windows, um, are raised a little bit, so not right at grade, thinking about where, um, water moving away from the building rather than toward the building. Um, so some pumps, there are a range of mitigation measures that could be adopted, um, so that we potentially could allow legalization, right? Because we know that a lot of folks are leaving in these homes today, clearly not safely. Um, um, but making sure that there's additional measures in place. We have thought about flood risk more generally for ADUs. Um, so for, um, at-grade, above-grade ADUs, there are, you could elevate depending on your coastal or inland flooding area. I think that is an acceptable approach. Um, more generally, we are looking at having, um, flood water, um, sensors, um, in homes, um, for, uh, uh, participants in the basement pilot program, the temporary amnesty program. Not only will they be required to install those, um, water sensors, but also to, um, post, um, emergency information for the resident and enroll in Notify NYC, which, um, um, has notifications around flood risk for residents. Um, so there's a number of other measures that we have written into the code to make sure that there are both warnings, but also that flood, flood risk is managed. Um, I know you also asked about geography. Um, we are planning, um, to have the maps, um, um, available within 120 days of the legislation's passage.
Uh, I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Dinowitz. And that was, I, I actually have a clarifying question on that. Um, so for the 10-year flood risk rainfall, is that, for the rainfall area, is that a map that is going to be created, maintained by the city, city agency? Or is that a FEMA?
So that will be a map that we will publish, um, within 120 days of enactment.
Okay. And how often, uh, at this time are, are, are the agencies considering?
I think we expect to update it every five years thereafter. We do expect that flood risk will change over time and potentially get worse. And so we want to make sure that those maps stay up to date.
You see, you said the city will publish the map within 180 days?
Hundred, I believe 120 days of enactment.
Great, thank you. Okay, ancillary dwelling units. Why is the city using the term ancillary dwelling unit when other jurisdictions, just call them accessory dwelling units?
Yes, I'm good, I'm good. Like, I don't really know. So glad to have a colleague on here from the Department of City Planning.
Great question. Um, so accessory is already a defined term within the zoning that has, it has one of the longest definitions in the zoning text and has very highly specialized interpretations in many contexts. I can say, um, my colleagues at City Planning have spent a lot of time talking with our friends at DOB, uh, around particular issues, uh, with the accessory definition. In order to sidestep that history, that complexity and everything else, to make sure that we were not, you know, stepping into a quagmire, um, we simply called them ancillary dwelling units rather than accessory so as to avoid any confusion among plan examiners or others in the future at DOB.
Got it. Thank you. Does the, does the administration at this time have an estimate of, with the criteria you're setting forth, how many properties could be eligible for the creation of an ADU or the legalization of an ADU?
So I think there's, so there's a number of things going on right now, right? We're talking about, um, changes to zoning and then we're talking about code changes. And the impact of those are potentially different, but they intersect. Um, so, um, for the zoning changes, um, we expect, um, that approximately 5% of, or up to 5% of eligible property owners may take advantage of that over, um, 15 years. And I probably have an estimate of how many homes that is, if you give me just a second. Um, that would be somewhere between 26,000 and 39,000 ADUs over 15 years, um, based on the zoning barriers being addressed. Um, the, addressing the code changes are necessary in order to effectuate, um, those conversions. Um, in terms of basement and sellers specifically, um, we believe that the temporary amnesty program, um, could result in somewhere between 2,000 and 6,000 homeowners that potentially would legalize a basement or cellar dwelling unit um, over the enrollment timeframe, um, meaning they have to actually enroll in the program by April of 2029 to be eligible. Um, and then would have more time to legalize the unit from, um, that point.
I'm sorry, and I missed it. The ADUs number was?
So for ADUs, the, ours estimate based on the City of Yes is up to 5% of eligible homeowners, which over 15 years is somewhere between, again, if we have also the ADU code changes, um, between 26 and 39,000 ADU citywide.
Got it. Thank you. Um, when it comes to sprinkler and fire safety measures in ADUs, uh, do other jurisdictions require automatic sprinklers within ADUs? Um, and in jurisdictions that have ADU regulations, have there been any fire safety concerns, um, or incidents that you would want to highlight for the public?
Um, so I can start and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague from the Department of Buildings, if he wants to add anything. Um, we, so fire safety has been a critical concern of ours since we first started to talk about basement and cellar, um, legalization in the, you know, 2017, 2018 timeframe. Um, we have, um, some of the strictest fire safety standards in the United States. And the ADU and basement codes before you do require automated sprinklers, automatic sprinklers in the, um, accessory unit. Um, that certainly does go beyond the standards that other jurisdictions have, but we do believe fire safety is essential, not just for the resident, but also for first responders. Um, that is not the only way that we are addressing fire safety, um, within, um, the legislation that we are discussing. Um, we also, um, have a requirement for smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, and if there's gas service, um, also a gas alarm. Um, there, we require a firewall or barrier for attached, um, or in, internal ADUs or a ton, uh, foot clearance for detached ADUs. Um, we require fire separation between the boiler furnace, um, and any habitable spaces. Um, we also require emergency escape and rescue openings. And for a basement or cellar, that means windows in addition to a door. Um, we, um, have also worked really closely with the fire department to look at access. Um, and one thing that we're doing here is making sure that the ADU is clearly identified. So for example, a basement or cellar ADU will be labeled Apartment U. A rear attached or detached ADU would be Apartment R. So first responders will know where to go, um, if they need to actually go to a building. Um, and of course, we talked about earlier that we are, um, making sure that there is emergency preparedness information posted and that the building owners are signing up for notify NYC.
Thank you. Um, I know, I know this, uh, question came up during the marathon hearings that we had on, uh, City of Yes with Chairz Grodnik and Commissioner, uh, Karion. But do you have any further, um, have you had any further conversations with the Department of Finance or, uh, others within the administration on how converting existing basement or sellers into apartments could impact the tax assessment of the property?
So we have talked about this, um, a little bit. We don't right now for an ADU that remaining Class 1 dwelling, we don't expect there to be a significant difference. Um, though, you know, uh, under this, uh, uh, the state actually passed authorizing legislation last year that would allow New York City to opt into a program that would offer a tax exemption. That's certainly something we're willing to discuss with City Council. Um, but from what we have seen so far, we don't expect there to be a significant increase in tax liability because the property class tax will not, our tax class will not change. Sure, and, um, my colleague from DCP wants to add.
Thanks. Just one small addition. Um, City Planning spoke with Department of Finance on this, on this issue a few months back. Um, and they clarified that there will, will be no increase in assessed value and taxes merely with the zoning change. It's only if and when somebody actually does something to the property, adds an ADU, that it could affect assessed value, um, and, and taxes. So that'll be one of the things that homeowners can take into consideration, um, when they're, when they're making that decision. The only instance when, uh, the zoning itself affects assessed value and taxes is in the case of a vacant lot, they made clear to us.
Thank you. That makes sense. Can you share, um, just for context, well, an observation and a question. Um, you, you've mentioned, uh, in response to one of my previous questions, that somewhere in the order of tens of thousands of units could be legalized, but we've been talking about hundreds of thousands of units, uh, where individuals are, or families are already residing, uh, in basements and cellars in particular. How, how will the city be approaching, or how will, will the city be approaching enforcement moving forward? Um, but looking backwards, can you tell us about the number of violations issued for, uh, basement apartments in recent years?
Um, I have some information here. Um, I also don't know if Gus has a different, additional information. We could probably follow up with numbers. Um, so the problem right now for, for basements is they are, we're generally talking about illegal units. Um, and so the numbers, getting a good handle on the number of illegal units in the city is very difficult. Um, we do have some information from the Housing Vacancy Survey. Um, and we've certainly heard estimates from some of our partners over the years. Um, but again, it's very hard to tell. Um, I do have some preliminary, some basic information on enforcement at the, uh, HPD. Um, HPD and DOB have slightly different roles when it comes to enforcement. Um, but, um, it looks like the number of vacates, uh, vacates, um, issued by DO, uh, HPD specifically with regard to illegal occupancy, um, has been somewhere between 500 and 600 units a year for the last few years. Um, but again, DOB has a more significant role with regard to, uh, uh, enforcement today. So I would defer to Gus to speak more about their role.
Sure. We can get back to you with, uh, specific enforcement stats on this, uh, for what we have, but typically our, you know, enforcement would be complaint-based. Uh, we receive also referrals from FDNY when they run across a scenario that they don't feel is safe. Uh, and then we, we send folks to, uh, inspect and where, where appropriate, issue violations and if necessary, vacate. Uh, not necessarily every scenario, uh, involves a vacate. Uh, violation could be issued, but a vacate may not necessarily be in order. For instance, if egress is, uh, in order. Uh, other scenarios though would trigger maybe an automatic vacate for things such as illegal gas work, uh, that, that might be in connection with the additional dwelling unit.
Thank you. Um, moving, moving forward, uh, if, if this bill becomes law, if the zoning text amendment becomes law, would homeowners still be penalized with, with fines and enforcement? Or would they be asked to attempt to legalize the structure?
So, um, an owner that is enrolled in the temporary authorization program, we will not enforce vacates during that timeframe, right? The idea is to actually put these properties on a road to legalization. Um, in order to enroll, they have to pass some basic, um, safety standards. So there is an inspection of the property. Um, and we can defer waive penalties, um, during the temporary legalization or temporary status period as well.
Thank you. Okay, um, with respect to costs and financial incentives, we've been, uh, talking about, the state has allowed the city to create an ADU tax exemption. Is the city, uh, in the process of creating one and, and if so, what is the timeline?
So we would love to say, it, it would require City Council authorization. We'd be very open to having that conversation.
So like next, okay?
Sure. Sure.
I'm looking through all my questions. I think I'm near the end. Shocking, I know. Okay, one, one last question on, on affordability or just rent levels. Would there be, would the city be tracking the rent levels that are provided within ADUs and basement converted units?
So, for an owner that is just participating, like, you know, creating an ADU, they're going to DOB, they're applying for the temporary status program or creating a new ADU otherwise, that's something that we would not have access to. For owners that are participating in our financing program, that is absolutely something that we will not only track, but have access to information for. And as I mentioned earlier, the program today offers owners a choice to either agree to a restriction on the unit or not. And depending on whether that makes sense for them financially and based on the financial assistance that we're offering. We are working with our program partner to help the owner with lease-up of that unit. So, we will absolutely know the rent charged.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. With that, that concludes my, my questions, just mine. Thank you for your testimony today. And I look forward to continuing discussions over the next few days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break so that the pregnant lady can go to the bathroom. And I walk very slowly and then I will open up the public comment.
Thank you, thank you guys. We can ask. Thanks for helpful information.
I had a book two years ago.
All right, thank you. Calling this hearing back to order. I am now going to open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts to such recordings at the sergeant, to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with a sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of the following legislation, the two reconsidered introductions with respect to accessory dwelling units and the pilot program to convert existing basement or cellar apartments to habitable dwelling units, intro. 850 and reso. 524. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony that you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant. And you may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. Okay, I will now call the first panel. Arthur Clock from Plumbers Local One Trade Education, Sylvia Morris from Pratt Center Base Coalition, Howard Slatkin from the Citizens Housing and Planning Council, and George Basalin from the New York City Master Plumbers Council. Whoever is ready can begin.
The first thing I'd like to say is that Deputy Commissioner Sarakis, who was just up here, was asked a direct question by the chair. And his answer was that he would have to check that he didn't know. So, he doesn't know the plumbing code and he doesn't know whether plastic water supply piping would be allowed in a one- and two-family home. The answer is no, it would not be allowed. I just thought I'd like to correct that. Good afternoon, my name is Arthur Clock and I'm Director of Trade Education for Plumbers Local One Trade Education Fund. My thanks to Chair Sanchez and members of the City Council Committee on Housing and Buildings for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to express strong opposition to both T 2024, 2764, and 2765 proposed legislation governing the construction of ancillary dwelling units and a pilot program converting existing basements or cellar apartments to dwelling units. The use of plastic piping or plastic PEX tubing in the plumbing of these units has been quietly slid into both bills and makes them risky and unacceptable. There are serious and well-documented safety and health issues surrounding plastic piping. And by including it in a bill to expand affordable housing, I fear that this body might be unwittingly creating two different plumbing codes. One that adheres to the most stringent safety standards for those that can afford it and one that ignores chemical contamination and fire hazards for affordable housing. It is my opinion that the creation of a secondary building code in New York City for underprivileged residents is abhorrent. Our building code has always been a beacon of equity. No more tenements for the poor. I was born and raised in this city and I was taught that we learned that lesson generations ago. This is not a labor issue. Yes, plastic itself is cheaper, but it's well-known that the purported labor savings when installing plastic piping is exaggerated by the plastics industry as a sales technique. Plastic water piping has a terrible record that is only getting worse. Do not take my word for it. Check with FDNY and NICA, who only a short time ago reiterated their opposition to the use of plastic piping, including saying that even if its use was approved, they would not use it. Plastic pipes are known to commonly leach chemicals used in their manufacture into water passing through them. Can I continue?
Please conclude, yep.
Passing through them. Environmental chemicals have also been shown to leach from the environment into plastic piping because it's permeable, while copper and other metal piping is not. Means that water passing through plastic piping is susceptible to both internal and external chemical contamination. Polyvinyl chloride, or PVC, is highly flammable. PVC is a substance that burns and can sustain a flame. And you can ask the FDNY how well PVC burns behind walls. You're essentially putting solid fuel into a building when you install PVC drainage piping. Remember, it travels through shafts and drilled holes from floor to floor. When burning, it releases polyvinyl chloride gas, which is highly toxic. To those who would say plastic piping has been found safe and legal for over 30 years, allow me to clarify the record. Every four or five years, when a previously unidentified chemical is found to be leaching from plastic piping, the plastic companies reformulate the chemical makeup of the piping. They do this every four or five years because you can only spot a dangerous chemical if you know what you're looking for. However, they do not remove the dangerous previous generations of plastic pipe. Once installed, they remain hidden like the lead pipe of yesteryear. It is also critical to mention that these plastic lines cannot be sanitized in case of biological contamination such as Legionella. There are only two ways to do that, chlorine or high-temperature water. PEX cannot deal with either of these things. It won't survive either of those. Plastic piping has been found to be attractive to rodents who chew holes in it, cause tremendous damage to the building when those pipes leak or burst. We certainly have our fair share of rodents. Along with health concerns and safety issues, many multimillion-dollar lawsuits have accompanied the installation and subsequent failure of plastic piping. In Florida, you can't obtain home insurance if your house has certain types of plastic piping installed. Now, the plastic industry untruth is that the plastic pipes are recyclable. They are not, unlike copper. Even though we're told plastic piping is safe, research continues to point to serious problems, including ingestion of microplastic particles. This has happened before. There was a time not long ago when we were told that lead piping was the way to go. At that time, when it was installed, lead piping was widely available, affordable, marketed by the lead industry as proven safe for use across a wide range of applications. Over the last decade, however, hundreds of communities have spent billions of dollars and countless hours finding and replacing toxic pipes made of lead in local homeschools and businesses. We are still paying for that previous belief in corporate marketing. Do we really want to use the underserved as guinea pigs again? The plastic piping industry cannot be trusted and the fact that they need to change the chemical makeup of their product every few years speaks to their dishonesty. I would strongly encourage anyone on this committee to remove the language on plastic piping from these bills. There should be only one building code that respects the safety and health of everyone in our city equally, regardless of their socioeconomic situation. As a child, I often took the bus to Reese Park Beach. I learned who Jacob Reese was and what he did. I urge the members of the council to act in the spirit of Mr. Reese and be careful not to create an alternate code for the other half. Sacrifices might have to be made to expand affordable housing, but it should never be the health and safety of fellow New Yorkers that is being sacrificed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of this committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of these two urgently needed local laws to advance the safety of basement and cellar apartments in our city. I'm Sylvia Morris of Pratt Center for Community Development, which has been working on this issue for more than 15 years with the Basement Apartments Safe for Everyone or BASE Coalition. As we heard earlier today, basement apartments are a critical part of the city's low-income housing stock, home to tens of thousands of New Yorkers. Pratt Center has found that unaccounted-for units are concentrated in neighborhoods that are majority people of color and where rent burden and poverty rates are higher than citywide. Amidst our city's housing affordability crisis, many low-income New Yorkers will continue to rely on basement apartments. Yet, because this housing is unregulated, residents lack basic tenant protections and may be living in unsafe conditions. To protect our neighbors and mitigate fire, flood, and eviction risks, basement and cellar apartment safety must be regulated. We urge this committee and the council to pass the two bills related to ADU regulations and a program to safely convert existing basement and cellar apartments. We also ask that City Council consider steps to ensure these bills have the greatest possible public safety impact. Most urgently, the geography of the basement and cellar conversion program should be expanded to include as much of the city as possible. The program area currently includes the 15 community districts authorized by the state to pilot reforms to the multiple dwelling law, which affects two- and three-family homes converting a basement or cellar unit. As reported in the press at the time, these 15 districts were decided in Albany without transparency and seemingly arbitrarily, excluding many neighborhoods where unregulated units are concentrated. The city has the authority to extend significant regulatory relief to single-family homes, which are not affected by the state multiple dwelling law outside of those 15 districts. A Pratt Center analysis found that half of the city's potentially convertible units and cellar citywide are in single-family homes. We urge City Council to use its powers to make sure the basement and cellar program improves safety in as many neighborhoods and homes as possible. Additional recommendations to strengthen these bills are detailed in our written testimony and testimonial here. to serve low-income homeowners and tenants and is developed and implemented in partnership with community-based organizations in frontline communities. BASE has been sounding the alarm on this issue for more than fifteen years, and in that time, the growing severity of our climate and housing crises have only increased this need. We urge City Council to act now. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, Chair Sanchez. Thank you for allowing us to testify. My name is Howard Slatkin. I'm Executive Director of Citizens Housing and Planning Council. We are a member of the BASE Coalition and we are also the evaluator for the East New York Basement Apartment Conversion Pilot Program. We are happy to be here to testify with our strong support for these important bills. They present an immensely important opportunity to expand the availability of safe, affordable housing for people who don't want or can't pay for, uh, an entire house. This will particularly benefit communities of color. Our polling research in low-density areas shows that black homeowners are three times more likely than others to rely on rental income from their homes. ADUs are the most modest incremental and low-cost way to add housing in neighborhoods characterized by small homes and higher rates of homeownership. And the establishment of a legalization program would enable the owners of thousands of existing basement and cellar apartments to lawfully implement critical safety upgrades, providing both them and their tenants security they lack today. We will be submitting written comments detailing improvements that we'd like to see to the bills to better address the needs of homeowners and renters, or at least do so in a more extensive and thorough way. These include ensuring that ADU standards are clear, achievable at low cost, and give homeowners the predictability they need. That includes, uh, prompt, uh, promulgation of any rules that are required under the, the legislation. Aligning all minimum ceiling heights with international and state codes at seven feet to eliminate the need for costly and disruptive excavation, which can cost two hundred thousand or more dollars to homeowners. Making the legalization process navigable for ordinary homeowners by providing assurance that penalties will be waived for good-faith pursuit of legalization with achievable milestones in that process. As, uh, my colleague here Sylvia mentioned, we'd like to see the council expand relief for existing basement and cellar units beyond the state pilot programs, fifteen community districts within the limits of the city's authority. And finally, use existing coastal flood zone maps, coastal flood zone maps, which do exist today, to promote sound flood risk management rather than creating new conflicting coastal flood risk geographies administered by different agencies. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm George Basalino, speaking on behalf of the Master Plumbers Council to raise a major concern regarding T twenty-seven sixty-four that would allow the use of plastic water pipe, which poses a direct threat to public safety. We do support making it possible to create ADUs. The MPC is a proponent of any legislation that makes it easier to do more work for less cost, providing and maintains public safety. Our concerns regarding these plastic materials are detailed in our written submission and align with the purpose of the building code. These materials have documented downside, which far outweigh any potential cost savings that may be realized during construction. There are current scientific and research and studies related to the potential leaching of toxic chemicals into the water system and their associated harmful effects on humans that must be completed prior to consideration of utilizing these materials. The twenty-twenty-two plumbing code has approved materials such as copper that have a long track record and pose no threat to public safety. At one time, lead was an approved material for water piping. Today, everyone is aware of how lead is a neurotoxin, can cause a variety of disorders from behavioral problems to brain damage. Despite grants and legislation to remove lead pipes, many potential ADU sites are still currently supplied by lead. On October eighth, the EPA finalized a ten-year plan that will require the removal of all lead systems. Ten years is a long time to continue to subject New York City residents to potential perils of lead water pipe. We implore you to require remediation of this hazard as a prerequisite to participate in this program. During the testimony on October sixteenth before this committee, the department touted on the co-revision process that includes over six hundred fifty industry professionals will volunteer their time and expertise to help create the best possible codes for New York City residents. This legislation circumvents that process. It also possibly creates a two-tiered code within New York City. Today, plumbers are not just tradespeople. They're technical professionals at the forefront of innovation. We embrace the future of plumbing methods and materials where every pipe, valve, and water distribution system utilizes advancements in science and technology to this most essential trade. But first and foremost, we're focused on public safety and environmental effects resulting from plumbing code modifications. Clean water is an essential resource and a right for all persons. Our motto, "The plumber protects the health of the nation." This can only be achieved through the application of effective building codes, which are critical to avoid negative effects and potential hazards such as water contamination and pipe failures resulting from code modifications done without due diligence. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard, report regarding some important legislation.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the members of this panel. We will now turn to testimony on Zoom, to remote testimony. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. First, I'll call Ryan Chavez.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, members of the committee. My name is Ryan Chavez, Director of Small Homes Programs at Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation. Founded in nineteen eighty-three, CHLDC is a nonprofit community development organization and settlement house based in East New York, and we are also proud members of the BASE Coalition. The HLDC had the privilege of administering the East New York Basement Apartment Conversion Pilot Program in partnership with HPD beginning in two thousand nineteen. And it's through this work that we gained unique firsthand experience with the opportunities and challenges of basement apartment legalization. One of the clearest takeaways from the pilot was that demand for basement legalization is overwhelming in communities like ours. However, we also learned that existing regulatory barriers make it nearly impossible to implement a program of this kind at scale. So the ADU and basements bills under consideration today represent significant steps forward in addressing several of the barriers identified in the pilot, and we commend the council for taking up these bills and strongly urge you to pass them. We also recommend a few key revisions that would further strengthen this legislation, which I will detail in my written testimony. But here, I would urge the council to align the minimum ceiling height requirements for subgrade apartments with international and state codes that require a seven-foot minimum. This revision would eliminate the need for exorbitantly expensive excavation work, a major barrier in nearly all homes in the East New York pilot. Further, to ensure that this program is effective in low- and moderate-income communities where basement apartments are concentrated, it is critical to accompany these legislative changes with a robust public loan and grant program, which should be paired with rental affordability requirements. Without financial support, homeowners of modest means simply will not be able to afford the upgrades necessary to bring them into compliance.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you very much. The rest of my comments will be in my written testimony.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for your advocacy. I'd next like to call up Aneta Sicharan.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and committee members. I am Aneta Sicharan, the Executive Director of Chaya Community Development Corporation, which is a member of the BASE Coalition. And my organization has also been working on basement issues for the last fifteen years. I'm here today to express our support for the bills that enact a basement program referred to as T twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven sixty-five and the amendments to the administrative codes pertaining to ancillary dwelling units referred to as T twenty twenty-four twenty-seven sixty-four. As the committee is well aware, New York City's housing and affordability crisis have reached a critical point. The ability to find safe, secure, affordable housing and maintain it is extremely difficult for low-to-moderate-income families. Almost half of the city's population is rent burden, spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent alone. Similarly, being low-income, being a low-income homeowner of color in Queens is also incredibly hard. Neighborhoods like Jackson Heights, Jamaica, South Zone Park were ground zero for the foreclosure crisis fifteen years ago and still suffer in the aftermath of COVID. Exacerbating these issues is climate change, where basement dwellers live in fear of the next heavy rainfall. Because of this precariousness for basement residents, Chaya has been advocating for critical safety measures, as I mentioned before, for the last fifteen years. We have found that the current status quo often perpetuates dangerous and precarious living conditions for a significant portion of our vulnerable communities. As such, we strongly support these bills, which make subgrade units safe and habitable. We urgently advocate for this expansion of regulatory oversight of these homes that will address and correct existing health and safety standards. The bill addressing basement applicable to fifteen basements, applicable to fifteen NYC community districts, takes a common sense approach to creating a program for homeowners. It allows for homeowners to step out of the shadows without fear of enforcement and start on a path towards legalization. It simultaneously requires immediate safety precautions to preserve life in the case of the next disaster. This program will have an enormous impact on homeowners and tenants alike in the fifteen districts. Low-income immigrant homeowners will finally have a manageable path to conversion. Tenants will have their first, will have a first right of refusal to come back after construction is done. We will have safety measures in place to protect from the next storm surge, all the while increasing affordable housing stock in New York City. Like the basement bill, we are also very encouraged by the city's proposal to bring more basement units online through the ancillary dwelling unit bill. This will allow for single-family homes to convert space into safe, livable units. Again, this is a thoughtful, measured, and responsible way of adding safety measures to homes while increasing the existing housing stock without expanding the footprint of the building and preserving the look and feel of neighborhoods. However, as encouraged as we are about the basement bill, we would also like to see the homeowner program expanded outside of the fifteen community districts to homes that are, that can avail themselves of the ancillary dwelling unit bill for their basements.
Thank you. Your time's expired.
I will submit the remainder of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Appreciate your advocacy. If we have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify today and has yet to be called, please use the Zoom raise hand function if you're testifying remotely, and you will be called in the order that your hand has been raised. If you are testifying in person, please come to the dais and speak with the sergeants. Seeing no one, I will now close the hearing. Thank you to the members of the administration and the members of the public who have joined us today. This hearing is adjourned.